And there was one of them uh. Can you tell Atlantic eleven? Oh, the work line of more limited three. Okay, Atlantic eleven, you're recording. Fully, you're fine, I'm on. Right. That's what I'm thinking. Right here. And you know that pull link. Go on, one of the last. Go ahead. What's this? All right. He tells that one. There's a lot of hill there. June is this morning for William three. Maybe our instruction. What? Got to go on. Uh, this is. Better one about it. And you're right, Steve.
And it's Lucia. Lucia.
West of us as you go into Friday night.
Evening, Gene.
Good evening, Joseph. How are you?
Having fun.
Yeah, always. Let me get myself situated here for a minute.
Okey dokey.
Glad you got those traps in, huh?
I've been out of the water for a while.
Yeah.
I had to get out November first.
Anybody still in?
Kimmy.
Is he?
Kimmy and he's hauling them out now.
Ah.
All the other boats are out.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh. The dump looks like Trapville.
Yeah, well, uh. The new launch, the new boat haul out group, Liberty Marine. They had trouble getting Jim Mallett's boat out.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they wouldn't bring the trailer down far enough.
Because?
They thought he could push it up, but he was under full steam and he wasn't going anywhere. They had to drop the trailer in.
Hmm. That's a lot of weight.
Twenty-five thousand pounds.
Yeah, he's got a big boat.
Oh, he's got a very big boat.
Nice boat.
Well, you go down the wash and look at it. You can stand right in front of it and really see how big it is.
So have you got all your Christmas shopping done?
Sure.
I want to ask you what you got me.
Obey a surprise.
Okay, how are we looking here?
So far, none of your, uh. Other, uh. Members are here.
Colleagues.
Colleagues. That's one way to put it.
They'll be on.
They got ten minutes.
A lot of work, a lot of business tonight.
I didn't catch that. Well, there's Dan.
Hi, Dan.
He's muted. Well, places were packed today. Everyone's afraid of the storm. They won't get out Friday.
We have it now.
Yep, you're up. Good trip, and all.
Great.
Mark's here. Evening, Tony.
Hello, good evening.
Hey, Tony. It's okay. You don't have to say hi.
Sorry, I'm, uh, trying to set us up here.
I know.
Hey, Joe, I'm gonna, do you mind going on mute or do you want me to do it?
I'll do it.
Thanks for joining us.
How are we looking, Tony?
We are good. Um. Do you see Mark?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, hey, Mark. Josh?
You're the Josh.
Oh, hold on a second.
So.
There he is.
I'm polishing off my peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Okay.
All set?
All set.
Okay, well, first of all, happy holidays to everybody from the Board of Selectmen and Tony. And welcome to our December twenty-first. I guess we call it the year-end. Board of Selectmen's meeting. We've got a very busy schedule, agenda tonight. And presumably, a lot of the folks that are online right now are here because of the Toyota. Toyota, Toyota discussion. Town administrator Tony is going to cover that during the town administrator's report. At the end of the agenda, along with Dave Waddles from Mass Wildlife. Please be patient as we have regular business, lots of, to attend to first. And then after the town administrator's report, we will go to Citizens Forum. A reminder to all for Citizens Forum, please state your name and address. Keep your comments to two minutes if you can. And we'd like this meeting to end at eight thirty. Please be mindful of time. You can get in line for Citizens Forum by submitting your name and address in the chat box now and throughout the meeting. So with that. Josh, I'll let you would start with, begin with opening comments.
Okay, um. Just one second here. Opening comments. Town Hall holiday hours, the Town Hall will be closed on Monday, December twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. And Monday, January second, twenty twenty-three, an observance of Christmas and New Year's holiday. Winter parking ban, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two through March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, from. 12:00 AM midnight to 6:00 AM. Visit the Parking Clerk's page at Nahat.org or Nahat Police Station website for more information. Reason for reason, Polar Plunge is Sunday, January 1st, 2023, starting at 11:00 AM at Short Beach behind the Coast Guard Station. I believe the Coast Guard Station is also going to be open at that time, the warm-up hut and bathroom facilities and so on. And I guess that's it for opening announcements.
All right.
Public hearing on the liquor licenses, or you want to pause? I don't know if you or Mark have any other.
Mark, Mark, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, we have some licenses to approve, so before we do that, we have to open a public hearing, so I move that the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, open the public hearing. Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Josh Hamperman. Mark Tolanai.
Gene Canty, I.
Okay, the first hearing we're going to have is on B-side liquor licenses and the common vicuula license renewal and transfer. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the liquor license renewal application for 2023 as approved by the ABCC for the B-side Function Corporation, One Southwick Ave., Nahat, Mass., over 908 Residence Restaurant License, All Alcoholic Beverages, and further that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town. And authorize, and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Licensing Authority Certificate Form. Seconded.
Discussion?
Just, this is just a renewal of their existing licenses, no additions or subtractions.
Correct. That's correct, okay, roll call vote.
Josh Hamperman. Mark Tolanai.
Gene Canty, I.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following transfer of the liquor license application for the year 2023 to be approved by the ABCC from the B-side Function Corporation, Gerardo Raphael, One Southwick Ave., Nahat, Mass., over 908 Restaurant License, All Alcoholic Beverages, to Victoria Hall, B-side, Manager Roan Barbosa de Silva, One Southwick Ave., Nahat, Mass., over 908 Restaurant License, All Alcoholic Beverages, and further that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payments of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town. And authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Licensing Authority Certificate Form.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, I seconded it for the record.
Any discussion?
So it's really just a same location, same license, different name? Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind you that this is a public hearing, so you may want to ask if there is anybody on that is either either approves or disapproves of this, this vote.
Good, thanks, Mike. Is there anyone out there that wishes to do so?
I do see someone. You're muted, John. John, you're muted, okay.
Good evening, my name's Attorney John Meridian in Democus Law Offices. I'm here on behalf of Victoria Hall B-side LLC. I just want to explain the transfer and what's going on to the board and to the town and request the appropriate approvals. Victoria Hall B-side LLC is buying the Function Hall, known as the B-side, from B-side Function Corp. It's going to be a transfer of business ownership, and we're seeking two things, approval of the transfer of the license, and the manager of record is Nadir Colo, not, not Roan Barbosa de Silva, it's Nadir. But this group runs a Victoria Hall Function Hall up in Woburn, and they're going to expand their business to the premises in Nahat. About 20 to 25 employees, when they do have functions, they're well-versed in checking IDs and complying with the alcohol sales issues, and all we're seeking is a transfer of the license, the same location. There'll be the same operation as it is now as a function hall, and that's what we're seeking tonight.
When do you, when do you intend to open?
This is all contingent upon the board's approval and then the ABCC approval, and the ABCC takes approximately six to eight weeks right now to review improved license transfers. So once that occurs, then we'll, we'll close on the business transaction and, you know, hopefully open up in early spring or late winter, early spring and get this going.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, discussion?
I don't know, does the motion need to change to reflect the, the correct management for that recent comment?
Is Dan there?
You're, you're muted, Dan. You're muted. Dan, you're muted.
Yeah, I, I know, I was trying to get on. Okay, great. Can you repeat the motion? I heard the question, and we're referring to the B-side vote, not the Turnstone vote, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You want me to read the motion again?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following common vicuula license renewal as it stands alone or in connection connection with a liquor license for the year 2023 for B-side Function Corporation. Am I reading the right one here? I think it's the one where it mentions the manager, is that correct, mister? Or the attorney that just spoke, John?
Yeah, Attorney Meridian, so the, it's the B-side, Victoria Hall B-side LLC transfer request, and the manager should be Nadir Coelho, C-O-E-L-H-O, and the motion should also includes a pledge of the license to B-side Function Corporation.
All right, we, we need to go through that again, I think, huh? So we have this right?
I'm just, Mr. Jim, I just waited for counsel to let me know if he wants me to read it that way.
Okay, what in, so I'm asking Meridian, what in there needs to be changed to act or reflect the current transferee?
The three motions should be, one, a transfer of the license to Victoria Hall B-side LLC. The second one should be approval of Nadir Colo as manager of record, and that's N-A-D-I-R, last name is C-O-E-L-H-O. And the last and third motion is approval of the pledge of the license to B-side Function Corporation.
Okay, well, I think that third motion you mentioned can be done with the motion that's currently on the floor. Do we agree? Okay, so, go ahead, that motion is already.
Just, sorry, Dan, just to jump in on, we have in our motion to Victoria Hall B-side Manager Roan Barbosa de Silva. Is that the name that's on the license, Attorney Meridian? Roan Barbosa de Silva's LLC manager. Nadir Colo is the manager of record, and he should be the name on the license.
So let me read that again, Dan, if you, if you want to do that motion again, and when I get to the manager, then I'll stop and get the name again correctly.
Okay, that's great.
I'm taking a minute here to flip through the supporting documentation to make sure it's consistent with what Mr. Meridian just said. No sense getting it wrong, right? Quite a few pages here, 72 pages, so.
Well, if you look at page six of the actual ABCC application, that's the correct name, Nadir Colo.
Buyer, okay, so the buyer, Roan Barbosa de Silva is the manager 25% ownership.
Didn't, didn't Mark have it correct to, to read the motion as it is and then substitute the names?
I just want to, Josh is just checking the documents to make sure. I'm just looking for where the name appears in the document, so. Sorry to take so long, it's just we might as well get it right for doing it. So where, where in the document does it talk about the manager?
So, Mr. Andrew, if you're, if you're looking at the ABCC application, and if you flip to the page, it had the four names with ownership.
Yeah.
A couple pages afterwards, it starts top, it says Section 12, Manager Application, Manager Information.
Yep, transfer of license, filing fees, payment, transaction. Oh, I see, yeah, manager of record, Nadir Antonio Colo.
Correct.
Okay. So, Josh, just before we, uh, repeat this motion, then there, there are two managers, the manager of the LLC, then the, then the second manager is.
The manager of the the base.
Well, let me read the motion, John, and then you let me know that when I get to that section of the motion, let me know if I get the, the names correct, okay? I move that the Board of Selectmen, we have to, Dan, do we have to go back and resend this?
Yeah, I think we should, just to make it clear for the record, so we'll just, I make a motion to, to withdraw the current motion, and then we'll start over again.
Okay, I, I, I make a motion to withdraw the current motions regarding the liquor license transfer.
Seconded.
Seconded, yes.
Roll call vote?
Josh Hamperman. Mark Tolanai.
Gene Canty, I.
So the first one we're dealing with is the renewal of the B-side liquor license, am I right?
Yep, so we did that, no hitch there. No changes there.
So now we're looking to transfer it to Victoria at this point?
Yeah, so we need to make a change there.
Yeah, I don't see anyone's name in that motion, maybe I have an old one, but I don't see any name in there.
It's in the two portion.
Oh, I see, oh, I see.
It's just that the, the manager's name is wrong there, and then there was, there was a second feature you wanted to include, mister.
Right, the last, so the, the three are the transfer, the manager of record isn't Nadir, and the third is the pledge of the license to B-side Function Corporation as their seller financing the transaction.
Okay, want to give this a shot, Dan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Counselor, I'm kind of lost, when you say that you're, you need to pledge, that's nowhere in the motion, what, what motion are you suggesting we need to pledge the license?
The, the, the application was for a transfer of the license.
Yep, to Victoria Hall B-side.
Victoria B-side, the manager of record as Nadir Colo.
Yep.
And if the third request is a pledge of the license, which was on page five of that application, to B-side Function Corporation. As B-side Function Corporation is selling the business for $150,000, but to do that, they're taking back a promissory note for that loan to be repaid. So a security for that loan, they want a pledge of the license.
So that would be a separate vote then, than the second one here? That'd be a third vote?
Third vote for that.
Okay, so I think we can, with that name, with that name changed, Mark, we can make the second motion as it's written here in our backup documents, and then we can make that third motion, we can ask Attorney Meridian to just state the motion, we can state as, as moved, and then vote from there, in terms of the pledge, and we can move on to the CV.
So we're not changing this motion that we just rescinded, right?
As long as the names are correct, I thought that there was a name.
It's the name correction, right? Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following transfer of liquor license application for the year 2023, 23 to be approved by the ABC from the B-side Function Corporation, Gerardo Raphael, One Southwick Ave., Nahat, Mass., over 908 Restaurant License, All Alcoholic Beverages, two. You want to take this, John, and when I can, go ahead.
The, to Victoria Hall B-side LLC.
Okay, and?
Manager.
And Nadir Colo as manager of record.
Okay.
Okay, so moved. Seconded.
And further.
Yeah, there's something, there's more out there.
Go ahead, Mark.
And further, that the, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat, and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Licensing Authority Certificate Form.
Okay, motion made, seconded and discussed, roll call vote?
Sorry, didn't we just combine two motions into one? No.
No.
We already renewed it, now we're transferring.
Okay, okay, I'm good, yeah, I was.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote?
Josh Hamperman. Mark Tolanai.
Gene Canty, I.
Uh, Counselor, can you state the third pledging motion you mentioned? Oh, he's muted.
Mr. Meridian?
He's muted.
Muted. Is, is that the next motion?
It's, it's not in the papers, but it's a motion that Attorney Meridian needs us to make.
Sorry about that, I, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve a pledge of the liquor license to B-side Function Corporation.
That sound all right, Dan?
Yeah.
So moved. Seconded.
Discussion on that? Hearing nine, roll call vote?
Josh Hamperman. Mark Tolanai.
Gene Canty, I.
And now we move on to the CV, all right, so now we're going to renew it, and we're going to transfer it. I suppose you can gather pledging, is that right, Counselor?
The CV does not need a pledge, just a renewal and a transfer.
All right, we already have it in front of us, so we can go ahead and just do that, don't forget the public comment portion. So, Mark, you're good to go for the B-side, B-side CV renewal.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, vote to approve the off-premises malt, no.
No, sorry, Mike, go back to the, go to your third page at the top. It's the motion, it's titled B-side Common Victualer License Renewal.
Right, right. Do this already?
No, this is, this was a liquor license.
I can, I can read it if you'd like, Mark.
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following common Victualer License Renewal as it stands alone or in connection with a liquor license for the year 2023 for the B-side Function Corporation, One Southwick Ave., Nahat, Mass., 01908, and further that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat, and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the Licensing Authority Certification Form.
So moved. Seconded.
Dan, have we got this right?
Yeah, it sounds good, let's, let the public comment if they want to, it isn't hearing after all.
If anyone in the public wants to comment, just raise your hand or put your name in the chat, and we will ask you to unmute. If anyone in the public wants to comment, just raise your hand or put your name in the chat, and we will ask you to unmute.
Not hearing any. Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light.
Jean Canty, I.
Mr. Chair, do we need the same change in this name as we did for the previous transfer motion? Because it's the same name as the other.
Yeah, so Attorney Meridian, the next motion is going to be the transfer. And the way we have it here is that we're going to transfer it from Gerardo Raphael. To Victoria Hall Bayside manager Ron Barbosa de Silva, do you want it to be a different manager name? Manager of the license, the manager of the common victory should also be Nadir Colo, as we just went through.
I just thought we did that.
That was the liquor license.
This is the liquor, liquor license.
Yeah, two different things.
Nadir, how do you say, how do you say it? Colo, C O E L H L. Okay, I can read this one, too. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following transfer of the common Victualer license as it stands alone. Or in connection with a liquor license for the year two thousand twenty-three. From the Bayside Function Corporation, Gerardo Raphael, one Southwick Avenue, Nahat Mass, zero one nine zero eight restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. To Victoria Hall Bayside manager Nadir Colo, one Southwick Avenue, Nahat Mass, zero one nine zero eight restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages.
Seconded, over.
Seconded.
I moved, seconded, okay.
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Public comment, Mr. Chair, it is another option.
Yep, any any public want to comment, raise your hand or put your name in the chat, so far, we don't have any.
Okay, roll call vote.
Josh?
Um, sorry, Josh Andrew, my.
Jean Canty, I.
That should close up the Bayside transfers and renewals.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority vote to approve the off premise premises malt and wine. Liquor license to Turnstone Market LLC, manager Leslie Entopa, one fifty-seven the Hat Road, the Hat Mass, one nine oh eight. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections. And payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town. Of the heart and authorized town administrator to sign the licensing authority certificate form.
Second.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Leslie, do you want to comment?
Um, yes, you need information, but do you, I mean, I want to, what I expect to do with it, or?
Exactly.
Yeah. Um, I want, I'm basically going to be selling wine, sort of a higher end wine that pairs with my food that I sell in the store. Um, to kind of complement the food, I've had a lot of people ask if that was something I could offer, and I thought it was time to reach out and try to do something like that. It'll just be wine, I don't, I don't plan on selling any beer.
But but that would make it available to to be sold.
What, this is a malt liquor, this is a wine and liquor license, not a, I believe there's a separate license for these beers.
Is there a difference in a malt?
Um, well, if she's not selling it, it's not an issue now, but I I do believe there is, but it's not really for just, we don't need to discuss it tonight. But we should ask for public comment, given that this is a hearing.
Yeah, if there's anyone else that wants to speak on this, please raise your hand or put your name in the chat, and we will ask you to unmute.
Okay. Hearing no comments and and no further discussion, roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light.
Jean Canty, I.
Mr. Chair, just for the edification, there is a license for all liquors, and there's a separate license for wine and wine and, after all, alcoholic beverages. There's several lessons for wine and liquor, that's a, that's a distinction I was making, this license for wine and liquor, not for all alcoholic beverages.
Right, Dan.
Sure. We close the hearing this.
Not all liquors, um, beer and wine, right?
All alcoholic liquors, that, all alcoholic beverages, correct, cover beer and wine, but the wine and malt liquor, I believe, is less inclusive.
I think that's just beer and wine.
Okay, well, I'm saying it's not the same thing.
Okay, okay.
Do you need a motion to close the hearing, Dan?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, I moved to close the public hearing. On um. On the alcohol licenses.
And the Victor licenses.
Yes.
Seconded.
Seconded, yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that the, we have some common victual licenses to approve, yeah.
Also, these these ones are renewals, so these ones uh didn't need a public hearing, so these ones, we can just go right through the motion.
Okay.
We can take them all together.
Yep, so it's it's, that's how it's listed in your packet, you read it just like that.
Thank you.
That's your idea, hold on, Josh, you want to take this?
Yep. I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following liquor license renewal applications for two thousand twenty-three to be approved by A B C C. Nahat Country Club, two eighty Nahat Road, club license, all alcoholic beverages. Nahat Knights of Columbus Building Association, Inc., seventeen relay yard, club license, all alcoholic beverages. R and B Management LLC, one Willow Road, license, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. Atlantic Functions, Inc., doing business as Ocean View Zero Willow Road Restaurant License, all alcoholic beverages. R and C Convenience Store, Inc., doing business as Seaside Variety. One forty-one Nahat Road Package Store License, all alcoholic beverages. Tides at Nahat, Inc., two B Wilson Road, re- restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. And further, that the release said licenses are subject to approval of all inspections. And payment of all outstanding fees, fines, payments to the town of Nahat. And authorize the town administrator to sign the licensing authority certification form.
Seconded.
What, what, if I could, Tony, what's the the process or the procedure for inspecting these, who does that, inspects the businesses?
Our our health inspector, our health agent, John Kulan.
Okay.
Yeah, we used to do it to make sure that the alcohol wasn't watered down, but we stopped that practice.
What would you find out? Um, okay. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light.
Jean Canty, I.
Uh, Josh, want me to take this?
Sure.
Okay, I moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the common victory licenses. As as stands alone are in connection with a liquor license. For the year two thousand twenty-three for the following establishments. Atlantic Functions, Inc., D B A, Ocean View Zero Willow Road. Tides at the Hat, two B Wilson Road, the Hat Country Club, two eighty the Hat Road. R and B Management LLC, one Willow Road. The Hat Knights of Columbus Building Association, D B A, the Hat Knights of Columbus, seventeen relay yard. Seaside Variety, one forty-one the Hat Road, Seaside Pizza, one forty-nine the Hat Road. The Hat Preservation Trust, the Hat, the Hat Life Saving Station, ninety-six the Hat Road. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment. Of all outstanding fees, fines, payments to the town of the Hat, and authorize. The town administrator to sign the licensing authority certificate form.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Yeah, so that that was the common vic licenses, I think we, I think we.
We skipped the entertainment one, yeah.
We skipped entertainment, but we'll come back to it right after this one.
Okay.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following entertainment licenses for two thousand twenty-three. For the following establishments, Knights of Columbus, seventeen relay yard, five TVs, five musicians, DJ, and pool table, and jukebox. The Hat Country Club, two eighty the Hat Road, TV, live music, DJ. Atlantic Functions, Inc., D B A, Ocean View Zero Willow Road, live music, DJ. R and B Management LLC, one Willow Road, live music, DJ, jukebox, karaoke. Tides at the Hat, two B Wilson Road, ten TVs. Two amusement devices, live music, karaoke, Bayside Function Corp., D B A, the Bayside, one Southwick Avenue. Jukebox, seven piece orchestra, non-amplified. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment. Of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of the heart and authorize the town administrator to sign the licensing authority certificate form.
Seconded.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light.
Jean Canty, I.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the used car dealer license, licenses class two. For calendar year two thousand twenty-three, for George Mustalas, D B A, Seaside Auto. Chris Pervell, D B A, the Hat Garage. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payments of all outstanding fees, fines. Payments to the town, the heart, and authorize the town administrator to sign the licensing authorities into a certification form.
Seconded.
Discussion. No discussion, roll call vote.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting warrant.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to kind of go over the budget timeline and and what we're doing here, tonight is our official. Budget kickoff for the two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting, uh, so tonight you are opening, officially opening the warrant. The January thirty-first is the deadline by bylaw for articles submitted by citizen petition. Uh, the Board of Selectmen have a similar policy for boards and committees. Uh, who seek to request a town meeting warrant article, uh, to submit by the end of January. What we're doing right now is, uh, starting to develop our budget and develop that, uh, town meeting warrant. We've, we've, uh, we'll be receiving our department head requests for budget next week. And we'll be putting together our first draft of our budget for the Board of Selectmen to consider over the next few weeks. Our plan is to um have our first draft. Submitted to the Finance Committee by the middle of February. Also, uh, another notable deadline is the Community Preservation Committee, they held a meeting last night, anyone interested in. Submitting an application for a C P C grant, you can go on to our website and and watch the video of last night's meeting. The application will be available on our website, and that is due by the end of January. So in February, mid-February, we will be submitting our. Initial draft of the warrant and budget to the Finance Committee. At that point, we'll continue throughout February and April. Um, to meet with the Finance Committee and discuss what our priorities are and the and the budget that we've submitted to them. We have the ability to open the warrant, uh, to make adjustments to either the budget, uh, or any warrant articles throughout that time. The Finance Committee, uh, Budget Recommendations and Book. Is scheduled to be finalized in early April, so that it can be submitted to our printer and. Uh, distributed appropriately according to the bylaw to all Nahat voters. Four weeks prior to town meeting, which would be April fourteenth. And then, uh, fourteen days prior to town meeting, May sixth, we'll post the annual town meeting warrant in four public places. The book will be delivered to doorstep seven days prior to town meeting, which is May thirteenth. That final week leading up to town meeting, we'll meet with the Finance Committee and finalize our motions. And town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
That's good.
And um, so again, you mentioned this, Tony, but just for any individuals, groups, committees, organizations. That plan to submit a um, application to the C P C. Tony, I was thinking, you mentioned the end of January, I was thinking I had heard, previously heard the date of January twenty-seventh. Um, but in any event. I encourage those folks to get their applications in early, it helps the committee sort through them all and prioritize them and whatnot.
That's the date that I have on my, on my uh, calendar here as well, I did not attend the Community Preservation Committee last, uh, meeting last night, so I'm not sure if. Uh, that was finalized, I know that their goal is to have, uh, the, have applications in before the end of January, so. The deadline will be listed on the application, though.
Tony, what are the criteria for? Ask you of submitting a grant, it's for open space?
Open space, recreation, historical preservation, and housing.
Okay, thanks.
Somebody has, um, sounds like this meeting on, on like a delay. In the background. Unless it possibly me, me close this door.
I I hear, I hear it too, um. I don't know, Mark or Jean, if you guys have, have it playing in the back.
No, not me.
Not me.
Well, now I don't hear it, so.
Might have been, might have been mine.
Okay.
Roll call vote on this, please.
Yep.
Josh Andrew, my.
My color light.
Jean Canty, I.
Preserving East Point, um. I guess, um, Josh, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but I I get, apparently Judge Cap had recently, uh, last day to. Made a decision, uh, on a motion by Northeastern to compel. The Hat Preservation Trust. To release any documents or information. Between the trust and the town under the. The cooperation agreement between the town and M P T. And the judge ruled that that information would be protected under the lawyer and client privilege act, so. Hopefully with that decision being made, we'll, we'll get into depositions in. In um, in January and get this moving again. I'm not sure if you're, if you're aware of anything else going on there.
Uh, no, um, just, just that, that's the only significant thing that that I know of, and I think it's, um. Like you said, now that some of this wrangling about, um, depositions and this, um. Protected client privilege documents is settled, um, I think it sounds like the discovery and depositions will start to accelerate.
Does this move anything up anymore in the timetable? When you have these decisions by a judge?
Well, the judge has decided on who who can be deposed and they've now decided on on this division, so I think. The next thing will be to schedule those depositions.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. I did have a chance to talk to Jim Ponzetta, our. Or one of our attorneys today, and that's that was his conclusion that this, you know, now we probably start to get into the depositions now. Kind of a long time coming.
Any further discussion? Tony, town administrators report.
Okay, first, I'd like to say that we. My, the emergency management department and the Department of Public Works have been closely monitoring the storm that's planned to. Hit us on Friday. We're. Concerned about the level of wind and rain and the high tide on Friday morning, so we're preparing for. Potential some coastal flooding and. High winds could lead to some down trees and and power outages, so we'll be putting a robo-call out tomorrow. For all those on the call, you know, please keep in mind of that upcoming weather and and do your best to prepare for it.
It looks totally like it. From the last report I saw, it's coming from the the winds are coming from the south southwest. That'll be Willow Road and the WAF in that area, not so much the north side. Or shot beach perhaps, but. So certainly looks like any anybody that they want to check your boats, anything that's loose down the WAF. You know, check that again, make sure there's nothing floating around because we are supposed to have astronomical high tides. In the eleven eleven point three feet. It was, you know, fifty to seventy mile an hour winds that could. That could cause quite a bit of splash over on the WAF.
Right, so our Public Works Department has been working all week. Fortifying entrances to the beaches and other low areas where we typically have splash over. We likely won't be able to prevent it all, but they've they will also, I think tomorrow, starting tomorrow, will be. Pumping down Bear Pond to build up some capacity. We expect the golf course to. See some some flooding and we have our, we have some emergency pumps and generators prepared. For deployment, so we're 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 in pretty good shape. Hopefully, it's just that one tide that we have to worry about. Next, I want to quickly talk about last night's Lowland Neighborhood Meeting. It was it was an excellent meeting with the. With, you know, most primarily residents from the Lowlands neighborhood, and we had our consultants from Dubois and King. Amy and Chris on the phone as well, and we spoke, we recapped the stormwater analysis, alternative analysis that they completed for us over the past year. There's a lot of detailed information in on that. It's on our website. We are happy to kind of be moving past the alternative analysis stage and start looking forward towards. Design and permitting of some of the infrastructure solutions that they're recommending. A lot of what the of what Dubois and King's scope of work really had to deal with is daily drainage and de-watering. Abilities after a flood simultaneously. The town is engaged with other consultants and grant applications towards improving. Climate change preparedness, so preventing floods from occurring. So we're we have a lot. Climate change and sea level rise has been a. A focus of the board of selectmen and I. It's a goal of ours for this year is to make some strong strides there, so happy to happy to go through that last night with the neighborhood. And look forward to taking the next steps. I know you, many of you were on as well, if you have any comments to add.
Just that I thought that you and our consultants did a great job, and it appears that. People in the impacted area were quite satisfied with the results of the report, so good job and thanks for getting through the through this.
Yes, same thing here, Tony. Excellent job.
Okay, thank you. So next, you know, I know, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Chairman, it seems like we have a lot of folks on the call. Certainly seems to be regarding coyotes, and we've seen a lot of action on social media and and. And other media forums regarding the vote that the board of selectmen took two weeks ago, so I'd like to. You know, provide a little bit of a recap there and and then we'll get into citizens forum. It it it's helpful for everyone to have some context for how we got to this point. To make sure everyone is on the same page, I'm going to start by recapping what the town has experienced and how we have responded over the past couple of years. Before I get into that, I want to reiterate that the board of selectmen and I, over the past two years. Have focused on educating our residents on how to coexist with coyotes. We're going to continue to emphasize how to prevent conflicts with coyotes and how to respond properly. To interactions with coyotes. All residents, whether you are in support or in opposition of the town engaging with USDA Wildlife Services, you. You have to understand that we are not attempting to eliminate coyotes from our community. The presence of coyotes in the heart is likely to continue, and it is our responsibility. To follow the guidance of the professionals on how to coexist with these animals. The town is currently dealing with an issue of problem or habituated animals. We are not the first town to be authorized to eliminate a problem animal. Again. This is not an effort of population control. This is not an effort to eliminate all current or future coyotes in our community. We are following the guidance of mass wildlife, who has authorized us to eliminate problem animals that do not fear human interaction. The town of Nahat. The town in the heart has experienced the presence of coyotes. About ten years ago, we had coyotes in the town in a heart, and at the time, the community hosted. Well-attended public meetings where professionals provided information about how to coexist with coyotes. It was very similar information to that of what we have provided recently. Over the past two years, the presence of coyotes has increased. And over the past year, we have had multiple aggressive interactions between coyotes and our residents and their pets. We have had multiple pets taken by coyotes in our community, most of which. Were not under the direct control of a human being, and therefore. We've had to engage with a lot of residents and educate them about. The biology of coyotes and the behavior of coyotes and how to prevent those types of conflicts to occur. We've educated our residents on the importance of eliminating food sources for coyotes. And we've educated them on. The importance of keeping your pets under your control and when you and how to interact with a coyote if you were to engage with one. In our our community being one square mile. There's, there's, it's a little bit of a forced interaction occurring between coyotes and our residents, so. They don't have, unlike other communities, coyotes here don't have much room to. To be not interacting with our residents, and so that's why. It's extremely important that we continue to emphasize the responsibility of our residents. On how to interact with coyotes when you see them, follow the guidance that mass wildlife and other professionals have provided us. It's it's listed on our website, and I will show that in a moment. We're going to continue to work with mass wildlife and other professionals in the future to really emphasize that importance. But two years ago, when coyotes first started to show up again in the town in the heart, it was, we've come a long way from that. I think, I think. At that point, our residents were. Interested and curious and, you know, tended to. You know, almost like take a picture of a coyote or not haze it in any manner. Until and and then over the last two years, we've engaged with mass wildlife to share the importance of to our residents that that is in the improper way to act. You know, it's our residents who are walking, whether you're walking a dog or not. On a regular basis, when you are out in our community and you encounter a coyote, it's extremely important that you. Attempt to haze that coyote, not only for your benefit, but for your neighbor's benefit. It's extremely important that we maintain that approach so that coyotes that live in the heart. Have a fear of human interaction, and in that, if we can establish that, then we can coexist with them. Over the last, as I mentioned, over the last two years, we've had professionals from Project Coyote. Present public forums. We've had mass wildlife biologists present at public forums. We've held. Multiple public meetings and it's been an agenda item on the board of selectmen's meetings. Almost consistently over the last two years. We've worked with mass wildlife to develop a website. And I'm going to share my screen in a moment. We've handed out, we've we've distributed. Almost a thousand whistles to our residents. We've distributed almost five hundred pocket air horns to our residents. We we developed a mail or postcard. Titled Mass Wildlife's Recommendations for Coexisting with Coyotes. We sent this to every household in the community, and on this. Postcard is a QR code that you can scan that would bring you to our website where we have additional information. I mean, as we have, we've, we've done robo-calls. We've put signage out and around our community. And I want to just bring you, I want to share my screen and show you the website and other things that we've done over the years. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so this is nahat.org. When you go to our home screen, right here on the front page brings you is a picture of a coyote titled coyote information. If you click on this, it brings you to our website. Most other communities will have a link that brings you directly to the state's website, but we felt it was important to have our own community-based site. For our residents to to be able to research on, and and the first thing we have here is we developed a. A matrix of. Of coyote behaviors and recommendations on what a resident can do in those types of behaviors. How the town will respond to those types of reports, and if we are filling out an official animal control officer report and then submitting it to mass wildlife. We have this separated in non-aggressive behaviors and aggressive behaviors. For example. If a resident sighted a coyote or heard a coyote moving through the area. They have the, we've suggested they contact the animal control officer or contact mass wildlife. We have information that we can provide them, and in that scenario, it's not an aggressive behavior, so we're educating our residents on. On that and determining whether or not we're going to be filling out a report. In that scenario, we would not. As as aggressive behave as behaviors become aggressive. It enters into a different category where if it's immediate, we're we're saying contact Nahat Police Department and will be dispatched to assist you in that moment. And then they are reporting that to our animal control officer who will then respond to you to get more information about that event. We'll be filling out a report and sharing that with mass wildlife. If you continue to scroll down on Wednesday, July sixth, we. Dave Rogers, who I see on the call, joined us in a in a community meeting that was well-attended and. Full of excellent information that the link to that video is right here on our website. Below this video, we have a link for coyote facts and info. If you click on that, it'll bring up common frequently asked questions. This document was also developed with the help of mass wildlife. This this document helps educate residents about. The behavior of coyotes, how to prevent interaction. How to interact with them at, you know, when you do interact with them. Talks a lot about what the town can and cannot do. Below that, we have a link to mass wildlife's. Mass.gov website where you can find a problem animal control agent. So the town looked into finding a problem animal control agent, but residents could also. Hire a problem animal control agent on their own. If you click on this link, it brings you to mass.gov. And it allows you to search for problem animal control officers in your area. Below this, we have a lot of information that we got from mass wildlife that we felt was really important to kind of highlight on the website because. As over the past two years where our residents were, you know, fearful of coyotes and not really or unsure about. You know, what to do and what could the town do? We really wanted to educate them on, you know, why the town in the heart is not in a position to control the coyote population. We've done a lot of education with our community about that, so while while we have a lot of residents in town that are afraid of coyotes. And wanted the community to act to reduce the population, we were responding to that by educating them as to why we were not in a position to do so. There is no hunting allowed in our community. There's a bylaw in the heart that does not allow the discharge of firearms. But even if that wasn't the case, there's a state law that does not allow you to hunt within five hundred feet of a structure. And not being so dense, there really isn't anywhere in town that you would not be within five hundred feet of a dwelling. So essentially, hunting, which is the, you know, the the main. Act of controlling a population is not allowed in the heart. There is, there is a legal regulated hunting season for coyotes in Massachusetts. It's it's just not allowed in the heart because of how dense we are and because of our bylaw. Trapping. Trapping is allowed. When you have a problem animal that you're trying to deal with and you're authorized by mass wildlife. And that's when you reach out to a problem animal control officer to engage in that activity. We looked into this, this issue or this this potential option. And the issues we realized quickly was that many problem animal control officers in our area do not engage in the form of trapping. Because the only legal trap since nineteen ninety-six is a large box trap. Which coyotes are very reluctant to enter. You also have to repeatedly bait the trap in order to get them somewhat comfortable. Which. Can lead to creation of problem animals. So not only is the the trap ineffective and not practical, but a lot of problem animal control officers don't engage in this activity because of that. And according to mass wildlife, over the last ten years, only three coyotes have been caught, have been trapped in that trap. In the entire state over the last ten years, so it's an extremely ineffective method. Relocation, when you're dealing with the problem animal, which the town in the heart is, you are not allowed to relocate that, so we. you are not allowed to relocate that. So we've gotten a lot of, um, comments and folks and concerns saying, why don't you just relocate the animal instead of eliminating it? When you're dealing with a problem animal or a habituated animal, you're not allowed to relocate that to some other community and essentially hand your problem off to someone else. It's not an allowed, uh, it's not allowed. So that's not an option. And then there's lethal removal. The lethal, lethal removal option is local, state, and environmental police have the ability to legally dispatch a coyote. Um, our, our police officers are not wildlife professionals. They are not equipped with the proper equipment, uh, to take this, to take this on. And as I mentioned, the town in the heart is extremely dense. And so, uh, not a viable option for us. If you continue to scroll down the website, we also provide information about the three main components to preventing conflict with coyotes, removing human-associated food sources, and aggressively hazing coyotes and protecting your pets. And there's a lot of information here about all three of those items. But, uh, lastly here, we have a link that brings you to the mass.gov website related to coyotes. And there's a number, a, a ton of information available for folks here. And then lastly, uh, we developed a hot zone map, uh, where we basically from where a lot of the reports came in that coyotes were being, uh, seen on a regular basis. These are areas that tend to have a little bit more open space in our town. We developed this to, uh, you know, let our residents know where they're commonly seen and we put, um, put out signage that looks like this uh, in these areas. Again, the QR code, uh, is right on that sign and the phone number to our police department is right on that sign. Uh, so these signs are distributed across the town in those areas, uh, to help people understand, um, they should be on high alert and there's a QR code where they can, you know, immediately get to our website for more information or do so later on. So, I want to, I, I really wanted to show, I think a lot of, a lot of the comments that we were getting after two weeks ago, our vote was, you know, the importance of doing these things instead. Um, as you, Dave Waddles is on the phone and, and I'm sure he'd be happy to comment on the fact that the town in the heart has been doing a lot of those things. Um, and over the last year, early in the spring, the town in the heart had three separate events where animals, uh, were taken by coyotes. Uh, actually, the first event was a pet was bit by a coyote while on, on the leash. The, the, that pet did not survive later on. The other two events were, um, pets taken directly off of the leash. Um, those events were reported to Mass Wildlife and at that time we were authorized to attempt to dispatch those problem animals. At that time, uh, the town looked into those methods that I talked about, uh, potentially hiring a problem animal control officer, um, and, and looking into the trapping option. And I meant, as I mentioned earlier, we, we realized there was a lot of hurdles or ineffectiveness in those options. Um, while we were going through that, um, the, a lot of the aggressive behavior, um, had, had somewhat diminished or subsided. We weren't getting, over the summer, we didn't get as many, uh, we didn't really get any reports of aggressive behavior. So at that point, we, we felt it was possible that those problem animals, uh, had left our community. And then in the, in the most recent couple of months, we've had, um, multiple reports again of aggressive behavior where, um, groups of coyotes were surrounding residents, um, at different times while walking their, while walking their dog. Uh, luckily, you know, those attempts by coyotes were unsuccessful, but they were aggressive events towards our residents. So we reported those to Mass Wildlife. And again, Mass Wildlife said, okay, you know, it, you have animals here who are comfortable approaching, uh, human beings in order, and, and probably more so in an attempt to take the pet, not the hu, not to attack the human, but comfortable enough to approach your residents and you need to deal with that problem. So we once again discussed the options that are far limited and started discussing the potential of signing an agreement with USDA to come in and help us, uh, with that, with this problem. Um, and that's the vote that we took two weeks ago. So again, what we're doing with USDA is very specific to dealing with problem habituated animals that are aggressive towards our residents. Um, trying to prevent what happened in the spring or worse. Uh, this is not an attempt to, um, control the population or eliminate all current coyotes or future coyotes from our town. Most, ninety-nine percent of our effort, ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent of our effort is focused on educating our residents and on how to coexist with coyotes. We, we, we are, um, it's, it's very likely that we're going to be living amongst coyotes, uh, in the future. And we strongly believe that, uh, the responsibility is on us and our residents to take the guidance from professionals and, um, learn how to coexist with these animals because they're likely here to stay. Um, with that, uh, Dave, if, if you want to add to anything I just said?
Yeah, sure. A, a couple of things. Um, the behaviors that you're seeing in the heart are not typical for coyotes. We do not get these reports of attacks on dogs on leash, uh, packs of coyotes surrounding and approaching people on the street. That is not something that is typical in Massachusetts. Um, attacks on dogs in backyards, attacks on cats, uh, cats that are unsupervised off-leash, those are common behaviors. And unfortunately, it is natural behavior for the coyote. So in those circumstances, um, we try to educate the, the pet owner that you have to be responsible for your animal. But that's not what's happening in the heart. You know, these, these animals are showing zero fear of people. And the actions that were proposed and offered to the town are to prevent a, a human, to resolve a human health and safety issue. Um, and, and, and that's what it is. I do want to compliment the town. I do not know a single town in Massachusetts who has as, who has done as comprehensive a job as Nahat in trying to educate and work with their community, um, and provide the amount of information, the hazing tools that you have to your community. Um, and so you have done everything you can to try to resolve this, um, this issue through non-lethal move, um, avenues. Um, and again, I just do want to stress that this is an attempt to remove these animals that pose a public safety threat. Um, there will be an expectation that next year, if a coyote comes back onto the, comes down the causeway, that you will be coexisting it. It, we won't just grant you permission to kill coyotes because they're a general annoyance or people are uncomfortable with them around the community. But to resolve a public safety threat, uh, we do feel that this is the best course of action.
Hey Dave, Gene Canty, just one question. What brought us to this point?
To this point, it is, it's basically, it is the behavior of the coyotes, uh, in that they pose a human health and safety threat, a threat to the public. Uh, it is an attempt to prevent someone from being bitten and injured by a coyote. Um, in Massachusetts, in recent years, the vast majority of bites of people have resulted from intentional feeding by people, uh, in that community. The other bites are generally speaking, the results of someone trying to protect the pet, trying to protect their dogs. Um, so in circumstances where a coyote is attacking a dog, the person tries to defend it and they end up being bitten and injured. Um, with the behavior of coyotes approaching people, um, that are walking their dogs, clearly with the intent to go after them, there's a very high likelihood that someone could be involved and bitten in those circumstances. Or, you know, when they're approaching these dogs on leash, that someone intervenes and they end up being bitten and injured. Um, so it's an attempt to protect the people in the heart and the public safety. And in this circumstance, we are, um, placing the, the health and safety of the citizens in the heart ahead of the coyotes. Uh, again, we're not going to eliminate coyotes in Massachusetts. The division has, uh, a very strong record of supporting coyotes. We consider them a valuable part of our natural ecosystem here in Massachusetts, and we have some of the most protective laws, uh, toward, in regulations about coyotes anywhere in the country. Um, but we are going to prior, to prioritize human health and safety over the animal in these circumstances.
Thank you, Dave.
I also want to state that we, uh, over the last two years, we've worked with Dave, um, on hand-in-hand with our animal control officer and the selectman and myself on what, how do we investigate reports that come into our community about interactions with coyotes? Um, you know, the decide, the reports that we're su- submitting up to Mass Wildlife are not reports of, you know, social media comments or hearsay type of scenarios. These, these incidents are being investigated by the town officials in direct contact with the person that's had that interaction. And we're asking very specific qu- questions about what, where were you, what time? How many coyotes? How close were they? Did you have a pet? Where's your pet on a leash? Did you attempt to haze the animal? What was your type, what was your hazing technique? How did the animal respond? You know, very important information that Dave taught us was important to gather. Um, there's, as I mentioned earlier, we've been dealing with this for over two years now. And I would say that a majority of those incidents that we've investigated resulted in um, non-aggressive behavior. They resulted in behaviors that didn't meet the threshold that would authorize the town to eliminate that coyote. And mu- much of the time, it resulted in us educating the resident on the difference between those types of behaviors. And, and so I want, I, I say that because I want, I want the public to understand that the town i- has been very diligent on, um, filtering through the reports that we've received and that the decision recently, uh, to attempt to eliminate these problem animals was not done just because of, um, a public fear or because of a nuisance or um, unvetted reports. These are legitimate situations where we are put in a position to, you know, guided by Mass Wildlife, uh, to attempt to prevent what happened in the town in the spring or something worse. Uh, so I think that's important to say as well. Um, any other member of the board want to say anything before we get to, uh, public forum?
I'm also say, uh, thank you, Dr. Waddles for, uh, joining us tonight and, uh, Tony, that was an excellent recap of, um, you know, the history and the education, um, attempts we've made and, uh, very well presented. So thanks.
Yeah, I would second that, um, Josh, um, and again, Dr. Waddles, thanks for, for, not only for joining us tonight, but the years of service that you provided us, um, uh, we really appreciate it. Just, uh, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that there, there were a lot of people joining us tonight. So before we get into citizens forum, um, I just wanted to remind people that this is a residence forum. Um, and when you speak, you state your name and your address, we'll be listening to residents of Nahat. Um, unless the chair feels, otherwise, um, I think that's the way we should go.
I would, I would just like to add that this is, and, and, and we've talked about this so many times, it's not a long-term solution. It's a stopgap measure. It gives us an opportunity to take another look at this, to, to, to dispatch the, the very coyotes we're talking about that are in existence right now and to be able to, to, to continue to push the program Tony's talking about. Tony has done a fabulous job with this. So with that, I would say we're on the right track.
Okay, so we're going to get to citizens forum. Um, again, keep in mind that this meeting is going to end at eight thirty. So keep your comments to two minutes if you can. We want to try and hear from everybody. Um, just either raise your hand or in the chat, let me know your name and address. I will call on you and ask you to unmute. Um, I don't, I don't know if I'll be able, if we're going to have time to engage in a um, ongoing discussion for, with each commenter. Uh, but we will, you know, this meeting is being recorded and we will be taking all those comments and questions under consideration and we'll do our best to get back to you at a later time. Um, okay, so first on, on my list is, uh, Francine.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, just quickly want to recognize two people that are on the call. Uh, we have, um, Katie Nolan from In Defense of Animals, which is a national organization, and Renee Seacor from Project Coyote are also on the call with us, and Rebecca Demetrick, which is terrific. Um, okay, a couple of points and I'll try to make this really quick. If the town is going to go ahead with a really bad decision, in that it is going to leave us, yeah?
Could you just say your name and address?
Sorry, Francine Amari Faulkner, two nine five Nahat Road. Um, so if the town is going to go ahead with this decision, which is basically going to make things much more difficult when we come back, to then have to deal with a partial, uh, fragmented coyote unit where now you've got, you know, uh, dominant, a dominant pair fractured and you've got potential juveniles left. And now you've got another coyote pack moving in from some other place. So there's going to be all this upset. So my, I, I'm re, I'm repeating that, you know, to let our coyote expert from California come in, work with what we've got for a couple of weeks, see what happens. So if the, the town is going to go ahead with this pretty severe plan and basically you don't have any plan going forward with how you're going to educate the public and have a fine mechanism in place. So there are, there are reasons why people don't, um, repeat the behavior that's caused some of this problem. Okay? So that's, that's one thing. They, I understand all the work the selectmen and, and the town administrator have done with trying to educate the public, but it's not working. People are not going to the website and most of the education has been left up to residents. We need a more proactive program in place to educate residents. And that's what the people, the experts from California would also be bringing to us. Okay, so the other really important thing I want to bring, bring up is our team has mapped all the police reports in the last year. And what we found is that there's really no facts to persuade that there's an actual public safety threat. Um, there's no humans were ever attacked. Most of the calls are, um, were falsely claiming. There was even a poster put up that claimed to humans were attacked. There were no, never any investigations done about these claims, none that we could find. So Tony and, and the selectman, I know you said there is, but we cannot find any information. Where is this information that were actual, um, investigations? There was even a nine-one-one call that reported several coyotes had rabies. The police never found anything. So these are just false claims that are fueling the hysteria. And there's, uh, we're questioning, is there really a public safety threat? I personally have chased four coyotes off the baseball field. They exhibit fear. There's no question they didn't run from me. I did that to reinforce, you need to stay afraid of people. I did it to protect them. There was no problem with them running from me, four of them, on more than one occasion. So what I'm wondering is what substantiates Mass Wildlife's claim that this is a public safety threat? And I'm not pointing the finger at Dave Waddles, but what I'm suggesting is that he's been given exaggerated information and that's what everybody's reacting to. It really does come down to public education and we need to really, really do a great job at that. But it's got to be more than what's being done because what's being done is not working and it's creating hysteria. Okay? So the subs, you know, where are the substant- So the subs, you know, where are the substantiated reports and what has really been investigated? There's been no bites on 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 people. And in the spring, you have to remember they have pups. The behavior is gonna be different in the spring than it's gonna be. You know, later on, and like you even said, in the last six months, there's been nothing. So I think that's pretty much what I wanted to come.
Francine Jane Canty, if 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 you had checked the Naham police report, two weeks ago, I'm sitting in my living room watching a football game. And I heard all this screeching and and it almost like the sound of a baby crying or screeching. And I looked out, I thought I heard a human voice. I said, I've got to go check this out in case somebody's out there and there's a problem. There were six of them. And they were in a frenzy. It took me a while to figure, to use the terminology, but they were in a frenzy. I went out, I started up my driveway, they backed me down on my garage. And I went in the garage, called the police and the police came and dispersed them. That is not good behavior.
Okay, thank you. Margie, Margie, I'm trying to find you on here so I can unmute you. Poreesi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could state your name and yes.
Oh, my, well, my name is Margaret Poreesi, fifteen Prospect Street. Now, how do we know that the coyote's territory does not go into Lynn? Because according to some state, the state has video cameras along Long Beach. They see coyotes coming in and out all the time. So how do we know how their territory?
Uh, Dave, do you wanna attempt to speak about coyote territory?
Yeah, um, we we don't necessarily specifically know, you know, exactly what their territory is. But clearly a portion of their territory is Nahat itself. It's a distinct possibility that they're using the causeway because coastal environments provide a lot of natural food. You know, as things get washed up on the shore, that's a place where they could be just one of the places that they're feeding. Maybe the reason that they're using the causeway. Whether or not they're spending time in in Lynn as well, they very well may be. But I certainly think that the majority, it seems that the majority of these animals' time is is on Nahat itself. I did want to comment, you know, just about the spring. There's no question that the spring, when they're in defense of the den, it can be a time where they are more aggressive towards dogs. You're also approaching the mating season right now, which January, February into March is the mating season and that is another time of year where we tend to see uh, much higher levels of aggression towards dogs and larger dogs at that time as well. As they see those, they interpret those as threats in their territory, just like they would another coyote. So you know, these aren't isolated necessarily to a certain time of year. Just in terms of that argument.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Candace Cahill.
Hi, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please state your name and address.
This is Candace Cahill, twenty Rollins Avenue. I do have a question for Dave Waddles. When you talk about or or when they talk about luring the coyotes in order to, whatever word you want to use, eliminate. How do you know that you're you're taking the aggressive coyotes and not just a hungry coyote? What is the plan, and this is also for the Board of Selectmen, next year when the coyotes come back? And I'm assuming Dave Waddles, and I apologize that I don't know all of your background, but when, my understanding is coyotes have a family unit. And if you disrupt that family unit, you're kind of really opening up the possibility of having other coyote families come in from outside this territory. So I guess that's, that's a concern to me, what exactly we're doing there. That's really my question.
Sure. The you, the point, the first point you brought up is is one that unfortunately is is valid. There's no way to determine which animal is the one that is the offending animal. You know, we're talking about responding to behaviors that happened earlier in the year, behaviors that have now continued into the fall where you have, but you have large groups of coyotes that are being aggressive towards people, you know, at least six. There were estimates that there were twelve animals. I heard reports that ten and twelve animals were seen on the beach and in different locations in town at different times. That is likely a mated pair as well as some pups from last year and then the pups that were born this spring that are now nearly fully grown. If it happens to be that the mated pair is removed, those pups are going to be the ones, again, they're nearly fully grown. They're, they become sexually mature at a very young age. They're going to be the ones that are going to establish a territory or maintain a territory in the hunt. The fact that Nahat is isolated relatively speaking compared to other portions of the Massachusetts, it's less likely that animals are going to be moving in, you know, freely as you would in mainland Massachusetts, if you will, where it's a more open system to coyotes in in interaction. I've heard this argument said that, you know, it won't be effective to remove these animals. If we were trying to control coyote numbers in Nahat, for example, you'd be exactly correct. If we remove these animals, transient animals immediately come in, in the pack becomes reestablished and essentially the population rebounds very, very quickly back to the same level. We're not trying to do population control here. It is trying to remove these animals that are posing a public safety threat. But you're, you are correct. Unfortunately, there's no way to immediately identify those aggressive animals, so we'll be removing a number of animals. Perhaps then waiting, seeing if the behaviors reside. And if they do, then there's no need to to continue with any action. If they maintained, there may be a plan to remove more animals. But the plan, again, as Tony has stated before and as we've stated in the past, it will be imperative that the people of Nahat take our messaging seriously, take the same messaging from Project Coyote and the other folks who have provided information. Never ever provide any food towards coyotes. So you're not habituating them, having them associate people with food, act aggressively towards them, haze them. So these animals that remain or animals that come to the hunt don't develop these aggressive behaviors in the future.
Thanks, Dave. Peter Barbara.
Yeah, yeah, Pete Barber, twenty two Emerald Road. First of all, I want to say thank you to the selectmen and to you, Tony, for all the work that you've done. I think us having our own town webpage dedicated to coyotes is really important. I know you've been working with Mr. Waddles for a long time and I'm sure others. I I really know that this is a difficult decision for the the selectmen to make. I've known you know, all three of them and I don't believe any of them are, you know, want to go out and just, you know, hunt coyotes and kill them. I do know that a lot of the, I have to disagree with Francine. I don't believe that while there may be some stories that get exaggerated, I think that there are a lot of stories out there. I believe there's fifty or more domesticated animals that have been taken. The the ones you meant to mentioned earlier on leash, but many of them that hey, I have two cats and and they're old and they like to try and escape from the house. So it happens. I think that this is a public safety issue. I I again, I applaud the selectmen for making this this decision. And I I, you know, I hope that that the townspeople can learn, you know, to to start hazing or continue hazing. I I agree with Francine, we should have some sort of bylaw or some sort of ticketing system that if you get caught feeding a coyote, you know, it's a hundred dollar fine and a five hundred dollar fine and so on to to curtail people from putting food out. Because I believe that people have even mistakenly put food out for, you know, maybe a cat, a neighbor's cat or something. Any type of food like that is gonna, you know, draw coyotes in and give them extra food. Maybe we need to do something with our trash barrels to make our trash barrels a little bit more, you know, protected against them. So I I think there's still more work that we can do, but I think for the time being, taking out the aggressive animals right now is is, you know, a public safety and and again, I thank the selectmen for their decision. Thank you.
Thank you. You you brought up a bylaw and trash barrels. We do have a bylaw related to how you handle food waste and 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 feeding, preventing the unintentional feeding of animals and the intentional feeding of animals. It's something that we're we're looking at with town council on potentially strengthening and presenting at the upcoming town meeting. So we do have something in place, more to more to do there to strengthen it. And, you know, I know that I I I will say that our residents have come a long way. I think that, you know, what once was, and not just residents, town staff and officials have come a long way too. You know, what once was you know, a a a community that we had a lot of leash law issues where a lot of, a lot of residents were not, you know, keeping their animals on a leash, where we had, you know, maybe some illegal feeding or or unintentional feeding of wildlife that led to to feeding of of coyotes. A lot of that has diminished over the last couple of years. And even to the point where, you know, a a two years, a year and a half ago, when we were, when we got a call or a or a report about a coyote issue, a lot of, you know, we we were criticized a lot about just saying there's nothing we can do. We've, we've grown from that and we've and we've learned how to uh, respond to those things appropriately and educate our residents. So I think that, you know, our residents have come a long way on eliminating those uh, food sources and our officials have come a long way on educating residents. I think that that remains to be our main focus going forward uh, as well and and and, you know, for those professionals who have offered their services to help us, I hope that they remain committed to our community and help us in the future to do even more. We did vote at the last town meeting, we voted to invest in recycling bins for all of our residents and we and we uh, have implemented that and it's helped a lot preventing pollution and and unintentional feeding. We've, the board of selectmen and I have talked a little bit about doing the same with with trash barrels. So that is something that we might be pursuing at an upcoming town meeting as well. Emily Potts.
Emily Potts, one fourteen Pond Street. Um, I have a question that is related to this and that is about bird feeding. Will we ever be, and this is maybe for Dr. Waddles, will we ever be able to feed birds again? Because last summer, when I quit, maybe in the spring, the mosquitoes came back in force. And that's, it's that seems to me to be sort of a health problem in this area. And I just wonder what the implications are of if we stop. Do we have to stop it forever?
I am responsible for managing black bears and coyotes and a lot of the species that cause a lot of conflict with the public. And food around our homes is the driver of that conflict. Coyotes will eat bird seed, you know, particularly Sue it, but they will eat bird seed as well. But it's also all the animals that they attract, the rodents that come in and eat the seed on the ground. That is their natural prey base. So they're going to be eating the squirrels, the chipmunks, the mice, the rats there. So it's that secondary feeding is probably the the worst part for coyotes rather than the bird seed itself. If we were talking bears, it would be the bird seed itself. But it it's difficult for me to say, and I understand the the joy that people take from bird feeding. It's a conversation I have quite often with folks. Um, I understand your concern about mosquitoes as well. It's just unfortunately, food around your homes is is the big driver of this issue. It really is. If you're, you really have to bird, feed birds, you know, trying to do everything you can to prevent the seed from getting on the ground is gonna be the big thing. So if there's a way that you can have an elevated bird feeder with a pan or something that catches the seed, prevents it going on the ground so that coyotes can't access it, that it's not attracting rodents. You know, but it it's in being diligent about cleaning up any seed that does fall. Um, but unfortunately, bird feeders are one of those attractors for and drivers of this type of conflict.
Thank you.
Okay, so th- those are the residents. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, we do have a couple non-residents, professionals that are are requesting to speak. I'd like to give them a moment of time.
Tony, I can see Ms. Hall with her hand up.
I don't have it on my here we go. Let me ask, please unmute name, announce your name and address.
Yes, I'm Elizabeth Hall. I live on seventy three Warf Street. I want to say thank you for all that you've done. Just your recap gave me actually a lot more information, even though I've looked at it, it was helpful to see. And just to, you know, reiterate that we all have been thinking about this and not, you know, it's not just a sudden decision. I I know that you guys have put a lot of time and effort into that. And so that was mainly what I wanted to say. Also, secondary, I love my birds. I do feed my birds. And but I have a ton of rabbits. I have the explosion of rabbits in other wildlife that we didn't have as much before, which I'm concerned about because we don't have the raccoons, we don't have the other, it's like, seems like a very uh, imbalance to our ecosystem now at the, at this point. And maybe something that's that Dr. Waddles can speak to. So I don't know if that plays a part in the fact that we have a much smaller food availability for them as well. Now that that like our, I I used to have raccoons, possum, skunk, the fox, woodchucks in my yard. I don't even see those. All I see are rabbits, squirrels, of course, because I do feed the birds. But, you know, it's, it's crazy, the loss of other wildlife because of the large, larger population of coyotes in this area.
In in most circumstances, this could be, you know, an artifact of the isolated nature of Nahat where i- in many instances, a lot of those animals like the fox, for example, raccoons, those would be animals that coyotes are gonna avoid. And, you know, the fox will avoid coyotes and they can use the same area in in coexist, if you will. It may be that in the hunt, there are fewer places for the fox or some of these other animals to avoid coyotes. And so the coyotes do have a greater ability to to prey on them or kill them as competitors. You know, there's also times where just small shifts in the animal's behavior or habitat use patterns from year to year can make it seem, can make it seem that there are fluctuations in the populations that really aren't there. So I've been in my house for five years and the first year we had fox all over the yard. Two, three years, not a single fox. But if we talk to our neighbor who's out the back corner about a hundred yards through the woods, they had fox denning under their deck, they had fox all over the place and we're seeing them constantly. The past year, we've had fox in our yard again, nonstop. So just, you know, little shifts in, and we're talking, you know, a couple hundred feet. And we weren't seeing them for a couple of years. So it doesn't necessarily, just because you're not seeing them, mean that they're not there.
I have, I've lived here all my life. And I've never had a year where we, we, up until the past three years, never had a year where I didn't have some of that going on. never had a year where I didn't have some of that going on. Um, so the past three years has been none of the, none of the um, raccoon, um, uh, skunks, opossums. I, I had them every year since I was a child on Wharf Street. So it's a, I live right near the Audubon um, area and part of the land that I have, has a very wild area that we are, I don't have any buildings. So I'm, I'm surrounded by green space and the fact that I have not had skunk, opossums, the woodchucks were here last year, but they're not here this year. But I, I had those animals in my yard every year. So the fact that I don't have, I, it's a markable reduction of seeing them. I just have not seen them in the past three years. So that, that to me, that is just indicative of the, the growth. I guess that's my, my feeling and I, I understand that it does fluctuate and move, but I've always had them. So sure. And I've never had rabbits like we've had the past two years. It's such an abundance of rabbits. I, 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 you know, they're faster, I suppose, but it's, it's crazy. So I, I feel like that is just to me, indicating an imbalance.
And, and you do, you have a large number of coyotes in a very concentrated area. So as I said, you know, they certainly will, you know, they are above those animals in terms of the dominance hierarchy and, and, and will kill those animals and have the potential to provide some control. So it's a distinct possibility that that is what is occurring.
Right, yeah. Just the, the rabbits have boomed like nuts, you know, so.
So, uh, thank you for your comment. I, I, I appreciate, you know, the your comments and what you've, and what you've noticed in sharing that. I, again, I, I just want to be clear that, you know, we stay on track with the fact that the town of Nahant is not trying to solve that issue or um, deal with, you know, what the population of coyotes are in our town and how that's affecting other wildlife. That's not what the board of selectmen and I and Dave Waddles uh, are trying to solve here. We are simply trying to um, deal with the animals that are considered to be habituated or problem animals and prevent, you know, the aggressive behavior to um, towards uh, our residents. Um, okay. So let me see, where, where are we here? Linda Tannfani, if you could just state your name and address. Uh, you have to unmute.
Okay. Hi. Um, I'm sorry, I got on late, so I, I didn't hear a lot of what was going on. Um, but
Do you just say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Tannfani, seventy-six Fox Hill Road. I've lived here for forty-three years. I agree with Ms. Hall. I back up to the uh, woods here. Um, and we don't have any animals, but what we do have are these coyotes. And personally, I'm very scared of them. I have a small dog. Um, everybody on my street is the same way. Everyone I talk to um, say the same thing, is that they're scared, they're scared to go out, they're scared to go out at night. Um, personally, I think the coyotes are beautiful, and if they weren't so deadly, yeah, let them live. Let them live among us. That would be great. But um, you know, a few weeks ago, I, I was uh, playing pickleball and with a bunch of other ladies and coyotes came out onto the playground. There were kids on the playground. It's, it's, it's too scary. And you know, they're ruling us, they're ruling over us. So you know, that, you were just talking about a dominance of, you know, what, I don't know what comes first, a skunk, raccoon, whatever. But um, when coyotes are controlling our lives, the citizens' lives, our taxpayers' lives, um, we can't have it. We're too small of a town. Uh, and, and you know, what, where are they going to go next? We're surrounded by water. Are they going to swim to Spain? I, I don't know. Where are they going to go? They can't go to the next town. We're, we're, we have a mile and a half causeway. I know they can walk the causeway, but they just seem to be reproducing. And um, you know, I'm leaving next week, I'm going to Florida. I'll be able to actually breathe. I know I'll be able to breathe because I can't breathe here. And um, and that's just me personally, but everyone, I, a lot of people that I talk to feel the same way. We can't breathe. We're, we're always looking over our shoulders, but you know, we're tense all the time. You know, I'm going to go down where there's alligators. Like I said, they take care of the alligators. There, if you, you know, we have them, they come on the golf course, they come into our um, resident, residential area. You call the game warden, they come down, they take them away. You know, there's no threat. There's a very large threat here. We've lost too many pets, pets of family members. And when I saw those uh, the coyotes with the children, you know, and Kelly Frary writes the same thing, you know, she's in charge of children and she sees the coyotes all the time at the playground. It's not right.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Uh, again, you know, I, I appreciate your comments and um, and I appreciate that there are, that residents have a fear of coyotes. Um, a general sense of fear. And it's, when you're afraid of something, it's, it's justified. I'm not, the, the town of Nahant, myself and the board of selectmen are not going to attempt to change, you know, what you're afraid of. Uh, we understand that there's a legitimate sense of fear. One of the most difficult things that we've had to do over the last two years, and Linda is one of, one of the people that has experienced this, is explain to our residents that your fear of the coyote is not something that is going to put the town in a position to try to control the population of coyotes. Uh, just because you're afraid of the coyote doesn't mean that the coyote is a problem. And that's been a tough thing to explain to a lot of our residents, but we've been doing it for multiple years now. Um, what we're dealing with right now is legitimate events of aggressive behavior towards our residents. And we're trying to deal with the problem animals that are in our town. Um, they will, we, we fully expect to have coyotes in the town of Nahant moving forward. And we have to coexist with them and our residents have to, I'm, I'm happy that there's a lot of people on and I'm happy that we've got, got a lot of attention because it's, it's a way for us to further emphasize the importance and the responsibility of each of our residents to uh, do the right thing when you see a coyote and, and, and do the right thing on preventing um, you know, eliminating those food sources so that it can protect you in the future or your neighbor. Um, again, this is not a population control uh, effort. So I appreciate your comments, Linda. I just wanted to reiterate that. Um, I know there are a few, few others that have been waiting that have been on the list. I'm trying to get to residents first. Uh, Brendan, uh, could you say your name and address, please?
Yep. Brendan Baranik Homestead, two Summer Street. Um, I've been able to listen to most of the conversation, but I did step out for a little bit, so I'm sorry if this has already been covered. But I was curious if, if you'd looked at them, um, about the migratory patterns as to whether, if you use camera traps to, or at least tried to understand if you've got coyotes regularly traveling from Lynn into Nahant and back and forth, because I'm wondering if, you know, what happens if this aggressive, you know, uh, the, uh, the aggressive animal that's been, you know, observed is actually traveling in from Lynn and it's not one of the ones that's, uh, that's taken up residence here in Nahant.
Dave, do you want to attempt to respond to that?
Sure. Um, you know, coyotes have defined territories and they defend their territories, you know, a family group with its defended territory against another family group. And so it's more than likely that there is um, a family group that is using Nahant proper, if you will, as its territory. And then, and then there are family groups uh, in Lynn. And so it's not likely that there's this traveling back and forth. I know I said it's possible before. I am assuming that the animals that are on Nahant are resident there. Um, and keep in mind that it hasn't been just an individual that has been involved in these incidents. Um, I don't know if it was more than one coyote that was involved in the attacks on dogs and leash uh, in the summer. But there have been instances where there have been five, six animals that have been surrounding people, walking their dogs, you know, and so it's not just a single animal. So there are multiple animals in the hut that that are posing this threat. And so um, if there's an animal that's moving back and forth, and there's a large portion of coyote populations that don't belong to family groups. Uh, they're called transients, essentially estimated it's about a third of the population. Um, and so those could be some of those animals that are kind of just bouncing around and that are being seen, moving back and forth on, on the causeway. Um, but you have, you have many animals that are resident on uh, Nahant and, and some of those are those aggressive ones.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Uh, Rebecca, again, if you could state your name and address.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much. Yes, this is Rebecca Demetrick. I'm with Humane Wildlife Control Box sixty-five Moss Landing, California. I'm the one who's offered um, expertise in this matter uh, to spend a week or two on site evaluating your coyotes and their behavior and helping the town build a progressive coyote response plan at no charge, if accepted prior to the killing. That said, listen, I think labeling these animals as aggressive or habituated, not only are these antiquated terms, we don't use those anymore. It's also premature. I think it's based also on faulty information. I have scrubbed through the entire twenty-twenty-two police reports as well as social media posts. I do not see anything that could be considered a public safety threat. So I think the behavior is being misinterpreted and then possibly relayed to the state, because I don't think, Dave, that um, you would have been advising this extermination otherwise. Um, so I think you've been misinformed. Uh, we're hearing so much uh, fear from the residents and you can see it on the social media posts and, and Linda was just expressing it. They're so frightened. These folks don't know how to, nor are they capable of hazing appropriately. And as Dave mentioned in one of his talks, this can lead to the, the coyotes in the town feeling like they're kings of the town. And that's what you're seeing. Um, as for the attacks uh, during summer, I want to say I, I scrubbed through what I could find and through the police reports. And there were two dogs that were lunged at. There was zero contact with, sorry about that. Zero contact with the dogs and it was right down the street from where the pups were. So this was that, that they were protective of their pups. They were not, it was not predatory. And that's a distinction that you must make. Also, I want to explain that the groups of the coyotes that you're mentioning that occurred in the last few months, again, these are the pups. They are following their elders. There were about nine pups born near Furbish Road this year. Not all of them probably survived, so you have a pack of eight. The two, the king and the queen that are the only ones that breed, possibly two helpers and the remaining pups of the year, which are the size of the adults right now. Seventy to eighty percent of these pups will disperse. That's why you're only getting four reports, police reports this month so far. They're dispersing, they're leaving, they're moving off the island. Um, to conclude, I believe that mass wildlife's position that they're aggressive has been based on misinformation. And I'm asking, please, Dave and your team to reevaluate the police reports. I'd also like the department to support our plan to provide our expertise, our boots on the ground, to assess the coyote's behavior, provide guidance to the town. Um, to build a progressive response plan that will include lethal removal of coyotes that exhibit unacceptable aggression towards people. You're not there. I've been working with wildlife for over forty years and nuisance wildlife for the last twelve. And thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, Katie Nolan, is it?
Yes. Hi. Um, Katie Nolan, my address is nine eighty-three Ashlot Drive, Washington, New Hampshire. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the general campaigner in Defense of Animals, an international organization with two hundred and fifty members, six hundred and nine of whom live in Nahant and Essex County. I'm speaking on behalf of these members to respectfully urge you to reconsider your decision to hire the USDA and instead implement a long-term coyote management plan immediately so that the current family of coyotes will be spared. A non-lethal management plan has been offered free of charge, and I ask that you consider this offer. Killing these coyotes will not address the root of the problem. Wild animal-human conflicts stem from human-caused issues like improper waste disposal, land modifications, feeding of wild animals and more, all of which are addressed by the non-lethal plan offered by coyote professionals. Again, I urge you to reconsider and implement a long-term coyote management plan immediately that is non-lethal. Planning to pursue non-lethal solution, solutions in the future is very commendable, but it makes no difference to the current family of coyotes whose lives are at risk. Thank you again for your time and your consideration and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Katie. I don't have anyone else in the chat. If there's anyone else that wants to speak, uh, please put your name in the chat or raise your hand and we'll ask you to unmute. Anna?
Yes, thank you.
Say your name and address.
My name is Anna Cox. I live at fifty-seven Breezy Hill Terrace, which is also next to a ravine. So I frequently see coyotes and when I see them, there's at least two at a time. Last night there was four. So um, I didn't, I just popped on. I didn't get a chance to hear everyone's speaking, but um, I'm, I'm really too irritated to address the things that have been said. But I uh, really like your decision that you made two weeks ago. And I listened to the whole December eighth um, meeting on tape and I thought it was very thoughtful and that the people who spoke seemed to understand. And I think it's ridiculous to be challenging uh, Dave Waddles and saying that he's not, that he doesn't know what he's talking about. And that's all I have to share right now.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Judith? Again, if you could state your name and address, I'm asking, uh, asking you to unmute now.
Hi, yes, this is Judith Murphy, eighty-eight Little Nahant Road. And I just wanted to uh, say that I'm in support of the recent decision and uh, the board of selectmen and Dave have done a lot to educate the people of Nahant on how to handle this. And so I respectfully disagree that we haven't been trained on how to haze properly. Um, I have three little dogs and I have to take them out one at a time on a leash in my backyard to feel comfortable. And that is, that is not living um, the way we should be living in Nahant. And that's what I would like to express. So I fully am in support in the recent decision.
Okay. Thank you, Judith. Brendan?
Yes, I just had Brendan Bronkum said two Summer Street, Nahant. Uh, just a follow-up question. So have camera traps been used to monitor the causeway and is this some, done on an ongoing basis?
I'm sorry, ask, ask the question again, Brendan.
Um, have camera traps or some, or some way of detecting um, the movement of the coyotes across the causeway? Is that, has that been done? And like, how long of a period was the monitoring done for? And you know, is it done, you know, now?
No, no, that hasn't been done. Uh, it's, again, we're not, you, as a, you might have missed in the beginning when I spoke, but that we're not, we're not monitoring that or attempting to prevent coyotes from coming to Nahant. And we're, we're not trying to eliminate current and future coyotes as a method of population control or nuisance control or anything of that measure. Um, we've, we've had substantiated reports of aggressive behavior that we've investigated and we've shared that information with mass wildlife and we're following their guidance to handle the current problem animals that we have in our community. We fully expect to have coyotes in the future. And it's, again, it's, it's our, our responsibility as a community to follow the guidance of the professionals as, you know, uh, Rebecca and um, Katie had, had mentioned, you know, the professional guidance on how to properly haze and avoid conflict. Uh, we'll be, we'll be continuing that effort. It's the, it's the main focus of our effort and it's our responsibility to follow that. So we, we have not been monitoring uh, the causeway because it doesn't really, it, it doesn't really fall into the efforts that we're, that we're pursuing.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, hold on, one other thing to speak.
Excuse me, okay. Um, uh, Jeannie, Jeannie Baronic, uh, to Summer Street in the hot mass. Um, I'm an educator and you've, and so I would, I'd like to raise these questions. One, have the children at the Johnson School been given um, at least an hour of instruction on how to behave around coyotes and how to haze coyotes? Secondly, has the Council on Aging conducted workshops of at least an hour uh, for seniors on how to haze um, coyotes?
So uh, you know, I I'd have to ask the superintendent of schools and the Director of Council on Aging for the specifics. But I do know that it's been um, part of their common, you know, it's been something that they've been talking about with their constituencies regularly over the last couple of years.
Okay, because um, since this is a public safety air, you know, area, uh, something that the schools would do. And um, you know, also to um, you know, it's, you know, it's really hard to change to get rid of a fear. But um, you know, women for years have had, you know, training in self-defense to to protect themselves. And so I really think, and it takes a while and that practice. And I really think that um, we really need to have a more stepping up of it, an active um, area in this. And so to to see if we can build and get rid of that fear and involve psychologists and perhaps the people from Moss Landing could help us in 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 that area. Because if there are going to be around, this fear is going to be around, and you're going to have to deal with it.
Okay, thank you. Mike? Mike Lutch or Luch? I'm asking you to unmute now if you can announce your name and and address.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, say I appreciate all your help. Um, I'm just curious if Dave would comment on, on what the um, the women from the IDA had talked about.
Okay, Dave? Is there something in particular that you would like me to comment about?
Uh, yeah, um, just that um, let me think about that for a second, that you're misinformed in 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 your investigations, and you're not, you're not coming to the same conclusions. And and you don't, and they're they're disagreeing with you that they're aggressive.
I would contend that six animals circling someone as they're trying to watch their dog displays aggression. I would contend that that does pose a public safety threat. Um, and if they disagree with that, that's fine. I don't know what they would require to occur before they would declare something to be a public safety threat. Is it someone being attacked by a coyote? Is it someone being bitten in one of these circumstances? These animals are displaying aggressive behavior, a complete lack of fear of people. And it is to protect public safety that these recommendations have come from the division. Um, if we were to get these sorts of responses or this this sort of information from another town, we would make the same recommendations. It is contrary to what we tell every single town and every single individual we work with in Massachusetts with coyotes on a daily basis. We teach the coexistence. We teach that they have to learn to live with coyotes. But when it poses a public safety threat, we are going to allow and recommend that the animals are lethally removed to remove that public safety threat.
All right, thanks, Dave. Yeah, I I I don't really want to um, get into a, you know, debate over who's right and who's wrong. Uh, I appreciate your comments, Dave, and I appreciate the question from Mike. Uh, I I'll add that, you know, the town of Nahat has investigated and beyond just what you'd find in police reports, these are follow-up conversations that either myself, um, Selectmen, the Animal Control Officer, uh, police officers who have all, you know, been guided and educated from Mass Wildlife on what questions to ask. Um, we've investigated. I I can't even put a number on how many different, you know, reports have come in that we've investigated. But I'll say that the bulk of those uh, have been, have resulted in, you know, educating the resident as to why that wasn't really an aggressive behavior. So, you know, the the comment that, you know, that we are you know, surfacing to Mass Wildlife exaggerated claims um, is is not exactly accurate. You know, in fact, it's quite the opposite. We've, we've actually vetted out a lot of those exaggerated claims. I'm not saying that they don't occur. And a lot of the reason why they occur is because residents are, you know, maybe misinformed and, you know, have that sense of fear. But and has guided us on how to, you know, filter through those. And so the ones that, the recent ones that have occurred that are substantiated, we have elevated to to Mass Wildlife. Um, but we have called out a lot of the ones that did not meet that level. Uh, Renee?
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could say your name and address.
Yeah, so Renee Seacor um, from Project Coyote, uh, carnivore conservation advocate with Project Coyote. Um, I'm live in Stanfordville, New York. Um, so your neighbor, but um, so uh, thank you, you know, thank you so much for providing this overview of, you know, all this that the city has done in terms of uh, public education and outreach uh, to work towards coexistence. I really, you know, I really do appreciate um, those efforts. And um, you know, Project Coyote has, you know, provided public education in the past, like you mentioned, and and we will commit to continuing to doing that. Um, because, you know, we want to ensure that Nahat residents are able to foster coexistence with all their wildlife, um, including their resident coyote population, right? That just has just as much a right to kind of exist in this increasingly crowded world that we're living in. Um, so I, you know, I would, I would just mention, and I would reiterate a bit of what Rebecca was saying um, that, you know, I'm not sure that the behavior or I'm I'm certain that the behavior that has been reported and kind of relayed tonight um, can be remediated uh, with a non-lethal response. Um, and I would say that, you know, a non-lethal kind of intensive and comprehensive, comprehensive, non-lethal response here is what we would require before you turn to um, this lethal response. Um, I think that there's still an opportunity for high-intensity hazing kind of directed at these nuisance animals, um, showing human habituation, uh, which is what, you know, part of what, you know, you know, Rebecca is recommending in her plan. Um, and so we would, we would urge you to consider that before turning to uh, this lethal strategy. And yeah, I I, you know, I know um, we're short on time, so I'll just leave kind of the comments at that. But that would be a summary of where kind of our stance is, is um, our organization.
Okay, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Um, Peter, Barbara, you are the the last uh, speaker here.
Pete Barbara, twenty-two Emerald Road. Uh, just a question to our experts, or I guess I'll call them out-of-town experts. Um, what are these non-lethal measures that you're suggesting suggesting we take with these aggressive uh, animals? And and I do know of personal, um, you know, relatives that have had um, very serious interactions with coyotes. So um, you know, I believe that there are aggressive coyotes. So what are the non-lethal ways to handle this?
So I, this Citizens Forum is really an opportunity for for you to speak to the board and the town officials. It's not really a a a open mic session for interaction back and forth amongst, um, you know, those who are here in Citizens Forum. I appreciate the question, Peter. Um, I'm sure that the professionals that are on tonight uh, would be happy to answer that. And um, I think I have some of their emails, and I can connect the two of you. Uh, it's certainly something that uh, they've already spoken with um, Dave Waddles about, and we'll, we'll be following up with that as well. Those techniques um, and and those recommendations are things that the town is is interested in. As I said, we're, we're going to be continuing to coexist with coyotes in the future. So uh, what we're, what we're dealing with today is is certainly not the end. Uh, so those, I I hope that those um, professionals, you know, remain committed to our community and um, you know, consider assisting us in the future as we continue to uh, coexist with with our new neighbors here in town. Um, okay, uh, any members of the Select Board have any comments uh, before we sign off?
No, I haven't.
Just say, um, thanks, everyone, for um, your questions and comments. Um, and very quickly, you know, the topic of coyotes can be an emotional issue, and people have strong opinions um, on both sides. Um, some of the discourse I've seen on Facebook on this topic in particular has been less than civil, and I just want everyone to remember that we we share this little community, and we're all neighbors. And um, I hope we can uh, express our opinions respectfully.
And I I would just, as I said, Josh, well said.
It's hard to, it's hard to hear you, I think it's.
Yeah, I just wanted to say um, yeah, I agree with Josh, you know, I haven't been happy with the comments that have been going on on social media. So I hope we all can respect each other, even if we have differences of opinions on this. This decision was not an easy one to come to. Um, I view my responsibility first and foremost for public safety, and that's the basis of my decision. And um, you know, hopefully um, we can learn something from this and improve in the future. And I want to thank everybody for participating, and um, thank you for putting this together, Tony.
Hey, thank you. Thank you both, and thank you all. And Tony, in particular, thank you for putting this across so succinctly and so incorporated. It's really a outstanding job in in doing it. And well, not just tonight, but over the last couple of years that I've been on the the board. You've, you've really done it. Um, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Go ahead. Move to adjourn. Seconded.
Roll call vote.
Josh, hand from high.
Hey, happy holidays, guys. Jean-Cathy.
Hey, everyone.
Yeah, it is. Good night. Thank you all.
Thanks, Tony.